The microphones are on, ladies and gentlemen. The cameras are rolling. A very warm good evening to you all, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting -- or, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, if I could trouble you to take the role.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhardt. Don Cummings.
Here.
Dean Kilburg. Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jim Rodecky.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simonian. Ron Singer.
Here.
We do have a quorum, so business will be conducted this evening. We have a very special guest with us this evening, soon to be a 7th grader at Geneva Middle School South, Sean "S-E-A-N" Chalmers, has promised me that he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will follow your lead. How's that? Whatever's best for you, man. You're in charge. The flag's right here, Hanson. There you go. We'll follow your lead.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chalmers. Mr. Chalmers is here to earn his citizenship badge, so be on your best behavior, Marx.
Okay.[94.34][94.34](Laughter).
I didn't hear last week.
Item 3 this evening, public hearings, special items and presentations. 3A is to proclaim August 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Kiwantus International Week, in honor of, ready for this, Kiwantus' 100th anniversary. Isn't that cool? We have some very special guests. Mr. Foster, I understand you've been granted the honor of prepared remarks, but you have some special guests as well, if you'd like to bring forward.
They picked me because I'll start the most, biggest, most entertaining for you.
That's good, you should. It's a big night. It's a huge celebration.
We, as the Kiwantus Club of Geneva, want to thank you for recognizing the 100th anniversary of Kiwantus, and as a community service organization, we're focused on serving the needs of children in Geneva, surrounding areas, and the globe, and we're very proud to be part of this great community of Geneva. As we celebrate 100 years of the Kiwantus family and spirit, we need more community service-minded people to join our club, to help strengthen us so we can provide more service to our neighbors. And many of you will see us around town in the fall during peanut days. We hope you stop by and say hi. This is our largest fundraiser, and it helps support things like the Living Well Cancer Resource Center, Northern Illinois Food Bank, just to name a couple. We're also joined in arms with the Geneva High School Key Club. They're part of the Kiwantus family, and together, we wish to thank you and your time and for this great proclamation.
You're welcome. Now, Rich, is it not true that the Key Club at the high school is the single largest social service organization at the high school? Is that correct?
It is.
That's amazing.
We're proud to support them. The kids are wonderful. They do so many things around the community. Sometimes we're embarrassed by how much they can do compared to what we can do. They've done a fantastic job. The Key Club advisor, Christine Tolness, has been there quite a long time.
Fantastic.
Well, I think you were a former Key Club member.
No, I wasn't smart enough, or well behaved enough to be that. I was a Dean's Group member, but I was a...
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And who are our special guests? My gosh. I recognize all the faces, of course.
I'm gonna let them introduce themselves because...
Excellent.
Jay O'Mory, former club secretary.
Rick Polton, current club president.
And Keith Ekins, incoming president.
Oh, really? So you're a heartbeat away still, huh?
An immediate past treasurer. He's been a very busy boy.
Yeah.
Indeed he has, but yeah. Well, we have a lovely proclamation for you. We always entertain a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Is there such a motion? Sino makes the motion, Marx makes the second, all in favor proclaiming August 3rd through 9th as Kiwantus International Week in Geneva. Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? May I present to you, Mr. Foster?
Thank you.
Should we get a photo?
You should read it.
Deb Staub's gonna call me and say, "Where's the picture?" You know she is.
If you're gonna take a picture, I would've worn a jacket.
No, you look great, man.
Have you got your camera ready?
Let's get up here where our city attorney is in the background, okay? Something's going on.
Got the camera.
Okay, both smiling. Let me get the city seal.
The lighting is really bad.
The lighting, man. Rich requested the lights to be off. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's always good to see you. It wasn't bad at all.
Ah, you miss me.
Mr. President, President-elect.
Thank you.
Behave yourselves. Now go out.
We're leaving.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
We continue with our agenda to item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Any questions or comments?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I was under the impression that 11A was passed unanimously.
There was a change in...
Yeah, there was change in the language, from the original language, considered at the committee of the whole meeting, therefore it was returned to the non-omnibus agenda for this evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that explanation.
Oh, you're welcome. Anyone else on items B through G on the consent agenda? We have a motion, we have a second, a roll call is in order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item, forgive me, item 9A is to accept the first quarter fiscal year 2015-2016 goals, status reports as presented in your packet. Alderman Sino makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maladra. Sean, can you just feel the enthusiasm here? Incredible, isn't it? This is like 7th grade, man. It's like this all year. Any questions or comments regarding the report? A voice vote sufficient, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $839,368.55.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that total can be found in tonight's packet on the Geneva website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pays as presented, to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx.
Point of order, what was the amount that was for approval again?
There was a change, and it didn't get reflected on the agenda, but what's in your packet is the correct amount, so what's on the summary sheet is correct.
So let the record show that the agenda is incorrect. The number should be, as the clerk stated, $839,368.55.
Thank you.
Good catch. The motioner concurs, the seconder, roll call votes in order. Mr. Clerk.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number, or excuse me, item 11A is to approve ordinance number 2015-26, amending Title 6 Police Regulations, Chapter 2, Miscellaneous, Section 5, Weapons of the City of Geneva Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Singer makes the motion, and Marx makes the second. This matter is on the floor for any questions or comments. Alderman Sino?
I guess I...
Excuse me? Do you want to address the changes first, Chief? It's up to you. I know you've communicated and corresponded with a great number of the council members.
Certainly do that. The reason that it was taken off the consent agenda was due to a minor change in the wording in Section 625(c). I changed the word "air gun" to "air rifle" as it's defined in the Illinois compiled statutes, and the only reason that was done was to make the definition more clear and defined.
Could you give us a brief, like, because part of this...
The definition?
Part of this is talking about concealed carry, and I think we're talking about two different things.
There are two changes to that section. The first one made it, our current ordinance makes it unlawful to carry any concealed weapon on your person or in a vehicle, but since the passing of the law which allows concealed carry, that's no longer always unlawful. If you have a legally issued Illinois State Concealed Carry license, you would then be in fact allowed to carry the weapon on your person or in your vehicle concealed. So it just took into consideration the new concealed carry law.
And then the second part?
The second one was to make it unlawful to discharge any firearm within the city and any air rifle within the city. And an air rifle, and again, I changed it to "air rifle" only to make it more clear, air rifle is clearly defined in the Illinois compiled statutes, whereas air gun is not. So air rifle is defined as any air gun, air pistol, spring gun, spring pistol, BB gun, paintball gun, pellet gun, or any implement that is not a firearm which impels a breakable paintball containing washable marking colors, or a pellet construed of hard plastic steel, lead, or other hard materials with a force that reasonably is expected to cause bodily harm.
Just one correction, Chief. It's a pellet constructed of hard plastic steel, lead, or other hard metals.
Correct.
With a force that reasonably is expected to cause bodily harm.
Thank you.
Constructed of.
Is there a way we can break this into two separate things?
Well, we can, I can, I'll defer to the city attorney to bifurcate the ordinance.
To completely separate issues.
Well, you can make an amendment, I guess, to either delete, or amend, or modify what's been proposed. There's a number of alternatives, procedural alternatives. You can table it, you can...
But my sense from the older woman is that you want to vote strictly on the concealed carry issue, and then vote separately on the pellet gun.
Issues are two separate issues.
But the...
Go ahead, yeah.
But it's firearms or air rifles, so it's really, it's not two issues. It's one part of the second issue that you have a concern with. Because we certainly don't want, we certainly want it to be unlawful to discharge a firearm in the city.
Right.
So that's part of the second portion of this. So your concern has to do with the air rifles, obviously. So it's not considering one and not the other, because I'm certain we do want to consider the other in part.
Excuse me, the typical procedure is then to have a motion to amend what's been presented on the floor via a motion and a second. So right now, ordinance 2015-26 is on the floor for discussion, so...
Before anyone offers the motion, then, I would ask the city attorney, if the motion is to amend, whatever element of this current ordinance we choose not to consider, whatever element is left would be 2015-27?
No, I don't know what the amendment would be. I haven't heard what the amendment is, sorry.
Fair enough, if, for example, we just strike air rifle from the second part of the ordinance, then the ordinance can go forward as 1 2015...
If that amendment were passed, and then you'd act on what's left of 2015-26.
Question?
Certainly.
I mean, this is bringing us into compliance with the state statutes or the state codes right now. I mean, do we have an issue if we then alter what, you know, the overall, do we have the ability to do that legally to? I mean, we're making these changes as a housekeeping to keep pace with the change in the law.
Well, the...
Do we have the ability at this level, I guess, to say that, "Well, we like it, but we don't like this part of it"? Is that even within our purview?
Yes, it is not, it's not unlawful to discharge an air rifle on private property by state law. So this would be more restrictive than state law.
Got it. Thank you.
But again, this is not anything that's unique. This is very common among municipalities in the Chicago suburbs, more so than it being legal or more lawful.
Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Sino, then Bruno.
So the fact that it's common, I think it's relevant, but not as relevant, is why, why any of these municipalities feel it necessary to have this prohibition? Lest anybody on the council have their mind made up already, I think that we should get some feedback on to why this is felt to be important, so...
My feeling, you mean.
Yours, or the experts, or whatever. So actually, I'll just ask some questions. So I think in our minds, we're all thinking of the Red Ryder BB gun, right? And yet, we also know that air rifles or air guns don't just encompass the toy version. There are some of these things that are pretty dangerous, similarly to like the way that a firecracker and an M80 are completely, in my mind anyway, completely different things. So the ability to cause damage and the ability to cause physical harm to a person is pretty significant with many of these air rifles, less significant with some of them. The differentiation seems to be the velocity and the caliber of the projectile.
I would agree with all of that, yes.
I've been reading. So then my question would be, is it possible to make the prohibition based on a certain accepted velocity and caliber, or does it have to be a blanket?
From a law enforcement standpoint, I think it would be virtually impossible to enforce that, because there would be, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, for us as law enforcement to know what the velocity of that rifle would be. Because weapons can be modified, and some of these, some of these air rifles can be easily modified, and there are demonstrations on YouTube which show you how to modify these And they're typically kids that are showing other kids how to modify them to make them more powerful.
And so our current code, it's legal for you to shoot these things in your backyard.
As long as the projectile doesn't leave your property.
It's illegal for the projectile to cross your property line.
Yes.
Right. And that's another difficult thing to do. If somebody has a window shattered by a BB or whatever, it's evident that it came from someplace else, but it's not like a bullet. There's no forensics that can tell you which gun shot it or anything like that. So we do live in a suburban area, you know, homes aren't separated by acres and miles, and some parts of town, they're stacked, one on top of the other. And so that is another sort of challenge that we have to deal with.
Yes. Another one of the issues is the look-alike factor. Many of these air rifles look like assault weapons or very realistic firearm pistols, and there have been kids that have lost their lives because they were out in the public holding these weapons that someone mistook for a real weapon. And again, years ago, that wasn't an issue. Now, if you look online, many, many of these air rifles are designed as assault rifles, sniper rifles, Berettas, Glocks, and again, up close even, they look very realistic.
Alderman Sino?
I wasn't...
Oh, forgive me. I thought you were, sorry.
Sorry.
My last line of questioning has to do with a letter that we all received. So the thinking that owning an air gun or a BB gun or whatever is the first step in teaching responsible behavior or use of firearms. So if we ban, if we prohibit the discharge of an air gun on private property in Geneva, is there any option or avenue that a parent and a child can take to learn how to use guns and to learn how to shoot responsibly?
There are absolutely classes that can be taken, gun clubs that can be joined. There are gun stores that offer gun classes, in full support, obviously, of learning how to handle weapons and of all kinds responsibly. I think that's very important, but I believe it can be done without discharging them within our community.
It's not, this ordinance does not prohibit the ownership of such a...
No, I understand that. I understand, but it prohibits you from going out in the backyard and shooting at targets like most of us did when we were kids. But then again, when I was a kid, you could go out in the backyard and pull up coffee cans with M80s and not have a problem. There were a lot of things that you could do when you were younger that you can't do So I was disturbed by this last week, but I've since learned that there's a big difference between the BB gun that I had when I was a kid and a lot of what's for sale today. As you said, it's very difficult to write an ordinance that differentiates between those that are more powerful and those that are what I would consider normal. And there is an avenue where people can go and learn the responsible use and practice with guns. So, and then Jim's point, this brings us up to par as far as state code goes. Last week, I was inclined to think that I didn't like this piece, but this week, after having learned a little more, I think I can support it. Okay, now I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Sino?
I yield to Alderman Cummings.
Actually, it's Alderman Sino, then Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Cummings.
Well, you know, I agree with the safety issue in looking at a gun and thinking it's a more powerful gun, and I understand all that, but I think a big part of this is parenting and parents being aware of what their kids are doing in their backyard, and I'd personally rather sit out in my backyard and watch my sons shoot at a target than sit next to them watching some violent video game blowing heads off of human beings. And that's why I just, I can't take that away from the kids in Geneva. I just, I don't think a few kids should spoil it for the rest of the kids and the rest of the parents who truly want to teach their kids gun safety themselves and respect, and that's just what I have to say about it.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was a little conflicted on this, and again, yeah, the mental image is the Red But yeah, I think you made good points in terms of, you know, having a look-alike weapon or look-alike device out in the open. I did reach out, you know, we obviously got at least one email from constituents. I reached out to some more, and I've gotten feedback that's more supportive of the proposed changes than those that are resistant to it, so I'm tending to favor the revised ordinance as written. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
I would, I can't, I can't support it. First of all, it's going to prohibit people in Illinois from, people in Geneva from controlling nuisance mammals. I know if I have, you know, house mice, but chipmunks, ground squirrels, some other animals in my backyard that are a nuisance, right now, I can use a pellet gun or BB gun to shoot those animals, and that's state of Illinois law. Rabbits, I have to get an okay, a permission slip from DNR, it looks like, from somebody I understand the issue of look-alike weapons. I think there might be room in this to carve out licensing or carve out, yes, it's difficult, but I'm not sure that we should back away from this because of the difficulty. I don't support not letting people discharge an air gun within the city limits. I think that that goes too far, and it is restricting, if we're looking to state of Illinois, it's restricting something that state of Illinois does give us. We don't have to take it, but state of Illinois does allow us to do that. The target practice, I don't do that, but I have been known to get rid of the ground squirrels on my property, only on my property, though, and only with an air gun. And so I think that this, I think it goes too far. We've managed, for a long time, Illinois had a plus 50cc and an under 50cc motorcycle license or not need to have a motorcycle license. We have, we have various degrees of licensing and okaying for things, and I'd like to see air guns carved out in some fashion to still permit people to use those on their own property. And so the blanket dismissal of the use of those, I can't, I can't support.
Can I comment, Mayor?
Chief, I would, maybe I should explain that state law has some prohibition about individuals under the age of 13 as well. It's not, there is a restriction, it's not unlimited, so...
Right, they can't carry them in public.
And they can't discharge them.
Right. The vehicle example you bring up, vehicles are regulated by state law, they have titles, so it's very easy to determine what CC a vehicle is compared to, you know, somebody hands me an air rifle, what velocity that's shooting at. It's not regulated in the same manner. Shooting at rodents or animals in your backyard, I think raises the risks of the projectile leaving your property as opposed to shooting at a target where you can control the area that you're shooting in, and it's static, you can control what's behind it, as opposed to shooting at a squirrel, for example, or a mouse that's probably moving or could possibly be moving, could be up in a tree or at a tree, and if it's anywhere waist higher above, I would say that there's probably a good chance that that pellet's going to leave your property for most properties in Geneva.
I shoot from the second floor down into my backyard. That means quite a sight.
Anything else, sir?
No, not right now, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Marx?
Do the air rifles and BB guns require those red tips, or are they just the air ones?
They are sold with red tips. There's no legal requirement for them to have a red tip, as far as I know. Maybe city attorney can speak to that, but I don't know of a legal requirement.
I don't know.
I thought most of them were sold with the red tips, but you're saying they can be removed?
Some, I've seen them painted and removed, and I think that's oftentimes on the airsoft guns that have the red tips or the orange tips as opposed to the air rifles or the pellet guns.
Anything else, sir? No. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was doing a little shopping online. I haven't found any that show red tips as sold, and I know as a, as a former youth myself, that would be the first thing I would take off. And some of these are pretty frightening looking. I, you know, if there was some way to carve out an exception for those that maintain their red tip, I'd be open to it, but unless that's... I'm not seeing too much of an opportunity to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Singer, did you have a comment you wanted to make? Anyone from the audience? Anyone else on the dais? The motion on the floor is, the motion on the floor is the motion as offered. There is a motion?
Can, so I can move to strike the air rifle BB gun?
If you'd like to. You can offer that as an amendment to the...
Yes, I would like to.
Well, I need to hear what the motion is, ma'am.
All right. I would like to continue to be able to use air rifles and BB guns in your own yard.
So you want to change Section 6-2-5(c) and strike the prohibition against air rifles?
Yes.
The motion?
The definition is that, because this gets very confusing. The definition of air rifle in the state statute, in the criminal code, includes... Yeah, one second. I want to get the exact word in here.
I'm assuming paintball guns.
So an air rifle includes an air gun, air pistol, a spring gun, a spring pistol, BB gun, paintball gun, a pellet gun, or any implement that is not a firearm which impels a breakable paintball containing washable marking colors, or a pellet constructed of hard plastic, steel, lead, or other hard materials with a force that reasonably is expected to cause bodily harm. So what is, what's your intention of carving out of that definition? The alternative is we, you accept out from that definition of air rifle, or you state what is prohibited of those items? I think it's that alternative.
If, if by accepting the amendment as so stated, it would lift the prohibition on all the items just stated. So theoretically, a paint gun could be used and discharged.
Yes.
Are you amending, are you asking for an amendment that removes air rifle?
Yes.
And all, all the...
All air rifle as defined, as defined by that statute. All right. So the motion is...
The amendment to the motion is, as Alderman Sino stated, to remove the term air rifle.
Rifle as defined by state statute.
As defined by state statute. This amendment requires a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Cummings. The amendment is on, or the motion as amended is on the floor. Any comments from the dais?
So Attorney Radovich, we can actually pick and choose from that list, is what you're saying?
Well, I was saying that's an alternative. If it was something less than all air rifle type guns, defined by the statute. I mean, so if BB guns was something that you wanted to retain, that's what I was going to say. You, you could either say prohibiting the discharge of all firearms and air rifles except BB guns, that's one method, or you save all firearms and the following, which would define those things that would be prohibited from being discharged.
That's where I was heading. I was trying to find the dividing line. I'm sorry.
And that's what I'm trying to find.
The motion is, however, you strike all...
The amendment to the motion on the floor is to strike all air rifles as defined by Illinois statute. Alderman Rodecky?
I'd like to speak to the amended motion that's on the table right now. It's a, it's a difficult one to, to consider for, I think, the reasons that are obvious to us right now. But I think if I'm going there on one side, it is going to be on the side of safety. And I know what Alderman Sino's position is, and I understand that about, you know, you can't replace good parenting. But, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the erratic individual who, for whatever reason, decides to shoot at squirrels, not from the second floor, but from his lawn chair, or, you know. It's, it's all encompassing. And I guess I would have a question to the chief. Have you had, you know, do you have, have you had complaints? Have there been issues? Have there been problems?
There have not been a rash of these types of incidents that caused me to bring this forward.
Then I guess the thing that I consider most with that then is the look-alike weapon thing. You know, we just live in a different age, in a different time right now.
And that being said, we have had incidents of property being damaged by pellet guns or BB guns. There's just not, there wasn't the reason I brought this forward.
Thank you.
From the dais? From the audience? The motion as amended is on the floor?
Well, you're, the amendment, amendment is on the floor. It's on the floor. So
The amendment, excuse me, the amendment is on the floor. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
This is done.
On the amendment to strike the language referring to air rifles as defined by Illinois statute.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Four to three.
Amendment does not pass.
No.
It did pass.
Four three.
Four three passed.
Three against, it's not a majority.
It's not a...
It's not just of those present, it's of those holding office.
Oh, those holding office. It's because it's a, yeah.
The main motion is back on the floor.
Motion to table until more of the aldermen are here. Since it's that close.
Motion to table to a certain date, sir?
Uh, next committee of the whole meeting.
Which would be August 10th. Seconded by Alderman Cummings. No discussion on a motion to table?
Well, it's a point, I think, ordered that no action be taken. It's just a discussion.
Correct.
Because it's, it's not a council meeting. It's a committee of the whole.
So you wish it back to the committee of the whole, not a council, then?
Correct.
So August 10th is a...
Correct.
Further deliberation. Okay. Excuse me. Seconded by Alderman Cummings. Okay. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Motion to table is successful. That'll be brought back at the committee of the whole meeting on August 10th. New business? Anyone new business from the audience? You guys are free to go. You're hanging out the whole time. From the dais? Anyone from the dais at all? Any new business? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Singer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is concluded. Microphones are off.